I want to welcome you to the Austin City Council meeting tonight. The time is now 6:30. The time is now 6:30 on March the 13th. Before we have our end of session, I hope that you have had time to look at the city council agenda and the rules that are underneath that. I would like to read them to you so there will be no confusion throughout this meeting. Citizens may appear before the city council to address items not listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the city clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The forms were over there. Citizens may appear before the city council to address items listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the city clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. A public consent form is not necessary when speaking for or against a public hearing. Persons with disabilities who plan to attend this meeting and who may need assistance should contact Jennifer Ghul at least 48 hours prior to the meeting so that appropriate arrangements can be made. All persons attending shall abide by the City of Austin Public Meeting Rules of Citizens and Visitors decorum adopted by Resolution Number 02201001. Pursuant to Section 551.027 of the Texas Government Code, one or more council members, our employees, may attend this meeting remotely using video com technology. The video and audio feed of the video conference equipment can be viewed and heard by the public at the address posted above as the location of the meeting. We have not always had to fill out these forms to speak publicly, so if there's an item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, now is your time to fill out that form. Otherwise, you will not be allowed to speak. And we will have our three minutes that you will have to speak when you speak. Make your comments. At this time, I would like everyone to please stand while Robert Destina leads us in our end of session.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless everyone in this room. We ask that you grant us the knowledge and the wisdom and the ability to carry out the actions of this city in order to do your will. We ask that you take care of us as we're here and bless us as we go home. All of these were the questions tonight.
Please remain standing for the prayer for the ladies and gentlemen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, are there any comments? We only have one part for comments, and it will not occur until item, Agenda Item Number 12. Thank you. At this time, we would like for our Chief of Police, Tim Barnes, to please come forward. I have known him since his first day at work here when he was a law recruit in Belie Land. He began his tireless service in this community as a police officer with the Vanoss County Police Department in 1992. In 93, he attended the Drug Enforcement Agency Narcotic School in Odessa and was, at that time, the youngest officer to attend in the United States. He is a certified K-9 handler and was awarded the K-9 Officer of the Year in 1995. Barnes remained a police officer until 1998, when he was promoted to Sergeant. In 2005, he was promoted to Lieutenant, interim Chief of Police in 2011, and has served as the Chief of Police since 2020. He has over 2,400 hours of law enforcement training and is a graduate of the Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas. Barnes obtained his basic peace officer license in 1992, peace officer license in 1994, intermediate peace officer license in 1999, advanced peace officer license in 2001, and his master peace officer license in 2012. He is a certified crime prevention officer, homeowners insurance inspector, and instructor. He received an Associate of Applied Science in Criminal Justice in 2014 from Columbia Southern University and graduated from law in 2016 with a Bachelor of Criminal Justice Administration. Barnes has been a member of the Texas Municipal Police Association since 1992, a board member of the Texas Senate Council of Governments Criminal Justice Division since 2002, International Chief of Police Association since 2012, Texas Police Chief Association since 2012, North Texas Police Chiefs Association since 2015, and the Vanoss Team Education Foundation since 2016. We have a great team of police.
It wouldn't be possible unless more things occurred. I paid my family, the community, and the employees that work with me every day. So I appreciate it. It means a lot to me. Love Vanoss County.
We are going to have some changes in our agenda due to a conflict of interest. We are going to go to item number 15 that is on your agenda. Item number 15 is a presentation and discussion regarding the Grayson County Master Thoroughfare Plan.
That's the county judge, Kenny, Bill Major, so he wants to make sure this procedure does it right. So you're being observed. Go right ahead. Introduce yourself to the audience.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jeff Whitman, the Commissioner here in Precinct 2-1, which I cover to the Vanoss County area, and I appreciate your consideration. Goodness, I hear. Several years ago, when I first took office, it became apparent to me right away that we had a Grayson County thoroughfare plan, and each of the cities had thoroughfare plans, but they did not coordinate, they didn't map out well. So there was very little interaction between the cities and the county on how to make that work. A couple of years ago, there was an opening at the Sherman Denison MPO, which directs most of the state and federal funding on what we do on State Highway Projects for a new executive mayor. We took that opportunity to also upgrade our county staff by going into a partnership with the MPO to create a position for our county engineer. So with that, we were able to come up with the legislative bonds necessary to hire an engineer to oversee some of these projects and to coordinate between the county and the cities so that we could come up with a thoroughfare plan that's thoughtful, maps out where we think things are going, has the demographic studies to really see the contribution of the county's people. Clay Barnett is our county engineer and Sherman Denison MPO Director. He's doing a great job, and he was given this task about a little over a year ago. So we finally got that together with the city's input. We hear this talk about that now, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Clay Barnett.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitman. I always like to hear my bosses say great things about me. I am here tonight to visit with you about the Grayson County Thoroughfare Plan, and it is a project that we've been working on for the past years. The past year, we did hire a few designers, which is a design firm out of Dallas, to prepare the plan. They couldn't be with us tonight, so I'm here in their stead. The agenda for tonight, just give you a brief introduction, talk about where we're at in the study, show you what we did in order to come up with a thoroughfare plan, show you the draft thoroughfare plan, and we do have a map here in front of the audience as well as a couple posters on the walls, and you're welcome. I think we have five more. Trim it out. We'd love to have your comments at the conclusion of the meeting, if you want to mark on those things or let us know in comments. We appreciate that feedback. We're going to talk a little bit about how we pay for this plan and then what are the next steps. The purpose of the thoroughfare plan is really to identify the transportation needs to serve the future growth of the county. It is not a 30-year plan, it's not a 50-year plan, it's a forever plan. It looks at what happens if Grayson County is 100% urbanized, how do we get from one side of the county to the other? Its purpose is to preserve those corridors so that when the growth does come, you can get from one side of the county to the other. And it acts as a guide for our investment in our public transport and our transportation facilities in Texas. If it's a plan to develop road network, so long-term and long-term goals, it does help coordinate with cities within this community. It's a planning tool that does need to be updated over five to seven years. There will be some changes in this, developers come in, and you can move the road in one way or another. So it's a good idea to go back over five years, five to seven years, and look at it. And then it allows us to preserve our corridors and contain them right away when developers come in with plaques that are required to dedicate that right away necessarily to that thoroughfare plan. The thoroughfare plan is not a bond program, a capital improvement program, but it can be used for that purpose. It is a tool that can be used to plan those types of investments. And then it's not the total solution to our future transportation, as we mean with other forms of transportation such as public transit and other kinds of investments as well. The study area is the entire boundary of Grayson County, it's 979 square miles. In 2010, the population was 120,000 and had 43,000 households, and included in that is 17 million residents. When we started the project, we started off with the thoroughfare plans from Denison, Sherman, Al, Gunner, and of course Vanoss County. We put those in first, and then we worked our way out from there, and we're going to come up with the thoroughfare plan we proceeded with. We have received a number of comments from a number of different cities. Linda Manis was very gracious and helped assist in some of the new information done in Vanoss County, but this is still a draft plan, and we're looking for feedback. Included in this as well is typical roadway sections. What we want to do is ensure that a minor arterial is the same lanes, the same configuration in Hollins Village as it is in Y-Ride, so that the road looks similar all the way through. So for a major arterial, principal arterial, the only difference there is the design speed, number of driveways, some elevated intersections, those kinds of things. A minor arterial is a little slower design speed, maybe around 40 miles an hour, a little more local feel to it, and nonetheless, it's still easy to get from one side of the county to the other. We also include a local street option in there, and we are looking for cities to adopt the thoroughfare plan once we're complete with it. We'll have the collectors and the local street sections broken up separately so you can adopt just the major minor arterial with the thoroughfare plan itself, and you can adopt the whole package and save you from having to create that on your own. Just speak a little bit about the draft Grayson County thoroughfare plan. Our major thoroughfares, more sound thoroughfares starting on the east side of town, of the county, State Highway 160, US 69, US 75, State Highway 289, Grayson County Tollway, and US 377. Major thoroughfares heading east-west, starting in the south end of the county would be FM 121, FM 902, US 82, and then Grayson County Tollway does take an east-west direction up the interstate. Our next steps are, we are looking for comments, and we are all working with municipalities. We're also working on a travel minim model that will give us a clear indication of how the Grayson County grows to the density of, say, Dallas County, whether or not our thoroughfare plan is fully successful. There's a number of different ways that we can pay for this. Of course, the ideal solution is have developers pay for it, but that doesn't always work. Certainly, if they're designing a subdivision around one of these thoroughfares, they could share in some of the cost of building that thoroughfare, but usually it takes other funding options as well. Certainly, to the city or county bonds, there's opportunities with the county vehicle registration. Of course, there's tolling, we even have our own RMA for Grayson County, so we hold a charter in Grayson County, state in Grayson County. We have transit funding options, and then there are a number of tech stock funding headquarters that we're dealing with. There's other non-traditional funding as well. There are options to do tolling, so there's a private, we all put it, it's put it down in the city, it's a nice name, but there are charges and tolls for folks who want to drive it one way. Of course, there's a congressional, there's earmark from Congress, there's vehicle registration de-organization, there's for the reaching, and the county already charges $10, but that can be as high as $30,000. We have the opportunity to do transportation investment zone, we can create a zone around a level we can go to run a grade, and then a increase in the valuation of that property. Those taxes go to pay for the road. Of course, cities and counties can help offset the possible tax dot adds by purchasing right away upfront to the locations. There's the state infrastructure, the bank loan, transportation road credits, and then, of course, President Trump has provided all kinds of money for infrastructure. So our next step, some of the funding, is to meet with the parish district and engage them in what kind of projects they might be interested in funding. We'll have the same discussion with folks down in Austin, and once those projects are identified, we'll visit and bring your own back on the case. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I know it was interesting seeing your demographics presentation as well. If you have any questions, or if you want to go on to the presentation.
At this time, is there anyone on the council that has any questions? Suzanne?
I don't think we have any.
I want to see the death rap. And am I correct in that you will be here at the end of the meeting to answer any questions from the public? Or do you have the conflict, you have the conflict with the head of the council? I will make an exception and let the public ask questions if you cannot stay. So you can get in demographics now.
I'm a little less polished on this one. This was given at the TAC meeting, that's our Transportation Committee Committee, back on the beginning of February. So this is part of the thoroughfare plan, really this is an effort to give us an idea of how much we're going to grow over the next 25 years, as well as program this increase in population, how this will work, and see how it functions.
Where's the easel? I'm coming.
So the variables I looked at was the population, household, household size, different types of jobs, household income, and then non-standard generators, non-standard generators, hospitals, things that a community has aren't necessarily captured in your standard population. They looked first at the entire county and then broke that down, sub-levelled to some smaller areas. County area, that level, they did gather quite a bit of historic data from all the cities as well as the county. They obtained the 2013 baseline estimates from Census Bureau, and then looked at some different forecasts and thresholds. For the small area level, they defined the geography, the razzes and pazzes, and the good and bad, and they developed the 2013 baseline off of that, and then distributed that for the razzes and pazzes. So these are the razzes. If you already recall, there's 18 of them coming from the entire county. The razz that Vanoss County is, and the razz through.
What's the razz?
It's a regional, something like that. And this just shows the razzes with the representation. For the county level process, they did look at population, households, income, all that stuff, looked at Census Bureau, looked at employment, they gathered other census data from different sources. They did use the tech stock or the Texas demographic data produced by the State of Margarit. They have what they call 5%, 1% smarties. That's what they like to use for transportation funding and modeling. We've got some data that's kind of aggressive in that, and they did look at Texas Water Development Board, and there's a private company that does a lot of these demographics, you know, units and people, and they're looking for that as well. They did look at terrible counties, the DFW area, and then cemetery metro, cemetery suburbs, and suburbanizing towns throughout the state. The DFW area, they look at Collin and Dent County, Houston, they look at the Zorro, Fort Bend, McCumber, Wall. Austin area, they look at Bassdrop, Hayes, and Woodington, and the same country. And this is just kind of a distribution of how those counties are going over the next 40 years, and they use that data to compare that to the risk. But before I present that, they wanted to make sure that they shared that this population-driven approach, after they looked at store growth rates and growth rates in terrible and suburbanizing towns, assessed the tiny and large scale organization, using other best kind of projections, including the 5% and 1% of the state of Ohio. So these are the numbers. This is the Grayson County draft forecast. Right now, we are at 120,000. By 2015, we are looking down to 335,000 for the entire county. And you can see that any growth rate is in the chart right now. This is how our growth rate compares to the State of Margarit's 1.0 model, it is just a line, the blue line is the Texas Water Development Board, and the green line is the recent board. So we are projecting a much more rapid growth than those frequencies are predicting, however the State of Margarit, they do a presentation, the audience of last year, they showed us growing at 3.5%. So we believe this is reasonable based upon all the data we've been getting, and look forward as we decide about these growth rates.
That's very much an outlook.
It is.
Do you feel that comfortable with it?
We do. We've looked at a number of different sources, we've looked at how Collin County grew, how Dent County grew, and how some of these other towns that I mentioned grew, and we feel very comfortable that is aggressive, yes. Is it reasonable? We believe it is. These are how, this is how we compared some of these other towns. The purple line is the same line in the previous slide. Cook County, you can see on there, is, right now, they've got a draw, the State of Margarit's office has it going faster than us. That's reasonable, but that's what it shows. I'm sorry, that's the case of the time. Cook is down there near the bottom, Grayson, the State of Margarit's office is near the bottom, State of Margarit, it's near the bottom, but Collin and Dent County are up around 3.5%, 4%. So it seems reasonable that by 2035, Collin and Dent County are going to start to develop out, in which case, in those instances, the growth is going to continue, the intercept it has, for a very long time in North Texas, it's going to continue very more. And so for those reasons, we believe that this projection is reasonable. And so for those reasons, we believe that this is projection reasonable. So here again, this is another historic and projected household growth rate chart. The RAS level is the larger areas. They looked at that, they had to distribute that throughout the county in order to be able to put that stack up onto the network, to see how that network functions actually works. And these are a number of things that are factored into that, that projection. So this is from 2013 to 2050. And like I said, this was the beginning of February, but they will be doing an update. We're looking at March 21st. We're doing like that, like they are working on these numbers and they're visiting that. As you can see, Van Austin, 2003 is the number on 20 seconds. What is that?
20,000 in there.
20,000 in there. And this is just how they arrived at that, where it continued to increase, several of those growth phenomena occurred for each of those 10 year increments. Right now, they have the Jordan growth plan, not showing it, but they have some pretty good business in Foxborough, County, Van Austin.
What's the growth that you're expecting to be given out? Let's just say we're just...
Built out? That, I'm not sure. I can't do a...
Okay, because I'm just curious, you know, we make a huge difference to the development on the west side. There isn't a lot there. So I'm presuming you're...
We have the service road funded. Colin County, 2221.
So how many population growth on the west side are on the road?
There is. It's hard to see at this, and this is only the next 40 years, especially 25, next two 2020 over 2030, we see a lot of east side. Still a lot of growth around Sherman, Madison, Foxborough, Van Austin, start to see growth again in Run, Tyoga and Collinsville. We are still working on this. There's a lot to change. We see Van Austin build down, Van Austin go up, but they are working on how they just It's 2030 to 2040, and we need to see Van Austin if it has, if it's ready to get out there.
So my thought is not much, we said we said that.
We know by then, there'll be the service road on the front road, but beyond that, we can't take that. In 2040, 2050, they are initiating the population of Tyoga again. It wasn't easy, but they're going to work on that, but this is, like I said, it's about 40,000 or so.
You still asking?
That's it. Did you guys go to the one?
Which one?
The Williams County. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a question. How do you fight for it? You asked a great question, though. My name is Bill Maitland, I'm the county judge, and I want to thank Commissioner Whitmire, and I would be pleased. I do have a conflict. It is spring break. I have four teenage boys. My wife has sinus infections in bed, and so I have to go home and feed them. That's my, that's my conflict. And Tim, I gotta tell you one thing, when she said 2,400, I was just saying traffic ticket, so I was glad to hear it was service average now. What I want to do now, folks, is, if you haven't figured this out, Clay is our detailed guy. That's not what I do well, is I tell our commissioners, it's their job to build the roads, it's my job to find the money. So what I want to do, take us at least a few minutes, and Mayor, the overrun was about five minutes, so I think I'll be under that. And talk about funding for these things. You asked a great question. Do comments. You asked, the comment was made, when's the toll road going to be here? I'm going to answer that and tell you we don't know, because the toll road is going to, we can't control when the toll road gets to Grayson County. And all these growth patterns, folks, I don't know if we're going to grow by 3.5% a year or 2% a year or whatever, but our, how many of you live in Collin County? Anybody? Well, okay. So my good friend in Collin County, like to say, like to say, we got the lowest tax rate in Texas, but they failed to complete the sentence, and the worst roads. So what I'm going to say is this, regardless of where our growth rate is, we have green space now. If we don't put our plan in place right now today, while we have this green space, we're going to wake up, or somebody's going to wake up 20, 30 years from now and look back and say, why didn't you do that in your job? So this thoroughfare plan is going to change. It's going to be, it's going to be tweaked, but the bottom line is, we have a plan in place where we can start praying for the growth. Now, to the toll road, all we've done at Grayson County so far is get right of way dedicated for the toll road from FM 121 south to the county line. We are asking for 400 feet of dedicated right of way, and we're going to build a, I want to build a two-lane, two-lane quality asphalt curb road for the access road. And to your point, you've asked, you know, there's nothing but growth going on in Grayson County. Let me explain something, folks. The toll road is a moneymaker of Grayson County. We have, this is important for you to hear, we're not part of the MTTA, the North Texas Toll Road Association, toll road association, right? We have our own towing agency called the RMA, the Great Mobility Authority. It is a five-term board, all volunteer, four selected by the commissioners, the chair is nominated by the, by the county judge and is a gubernatorial appointee. Here's why that's important. You don't throw the money in buckets, but when you slide, when your little thing gets swayed, where's that money go? The toll road, where'd it go? MTTA, exactly. And what is MTTA? It's a quasi, I don't know what that means, kind of sort of governmental entity that's what there is, their business to build more toll roads. In Grayson County, when that toll road is here, the money will stay in Grayson County. It can be used to develop our county, it can relieve your property taxes, it can do a lot of things for it, because, folks, people are going to drive through Grayson County getting hither and yon, and we keep the money. And you don't like, nobody likes toll roads, right? I just wish I had four boys, right? They were, I didn't like, I didn't like disposable diapers either, but I've got a half. So the toll road for us, another two in our toll box, is a revenue generator for Grayson County. Final question, I'm going to get on with the money. Where's the toll road ending at? Nope, we said 380. We were throwing horse shoes, you get a point, you were close. The toll road ends a half a mile south of Highway 380. When you get up, remember when you get, you take the exit ramp to go to, to go to 380, right? The toll road will not come to Grayson County until the west, if you go north on the, on the access road, the toll road, it will terminate you FM 428 in Slone. That's, that's Dallas Parkway to this conversation, right? So until the west, the west side, the southbound access road is built in Collin County, the toll road will not fly over 380 because there's no place to go. So our good friend in Collin County dictate that. What we have been told is that at the same time that we, that from 428 north to Grayson County for the, for the access, for the, the southbound access road to Dillon County, they will begin that simultaneously, build that down to 380. So the bottom line is, you should see two access roads going north and south at about 428 at the same time. Now, whether that happens or not, I can't tell you. What I can tell you is this, we should have access roads of the south, the ultimate southbound access road, the toll road, here in Grayson County by 2020, 2021. Okay, so that's the toll road. Now, money. The reason I'm here tonight is to, to, I guess emphasize more than anything else, what we're talking about today, this thoroughfare plan, is real. How many of you are familiar with what's going on in Austin, the tollways and managed lanes and, you know, whether you like toll roads or don't like toll roads, that's another discussion tonight, folks. But here I'm going to tell you. The TTC, the Texas Transportation Committee, which is the board of directors for text dot, has vetoed two large projects because they involve tolls. That's the east side of 635 LBJ, which basically connects 75 all the way over to I-20, and downtown Austin, I-35 won't be downtown Austin. Ever, ever remember that, it is gridlock. So, and the reason they do this, despite the fact that mayors and every senate leader you can think of wants this to happen, there's a philosophical gridlock in Austin today that they are saying, you know, we don't want tolls. Gee whiz, if the only way you can build a road is to toll it, you can't build the road. That's today. Now, I believe we have a two-year window for the next session, because you can disagree with me, but I think you're going to get more, and you can quote me on this, ideologues that are more concerned about their philosophy in solving transportation issues. By that, I mean, I think it will see this getting worse, not better for us. So what's going to happen is this, in my opinion, the big, you know, again, I have four teenage boys, 18 to 12, okay? When we share in my house, you know what happens? Four of your brothers and marces didn't get anything, right? Little, no getting much. So what I think's going to happen is this, they're going to recome in, Austin, they're going to look around, they're going to find all this money laying around in the smaller rural areas, and they're going to rob them from the little ones to take care of these, of these big projects. Because there's no doubt that Dallas and Austin need some roads, right? So that's my, rather long-winded way of saying to you, I believe we have a two-year opportunity to find projects that get teed up, get ready, so that we can go to text dot with a local match, I'm coming to it, a local match, and say, we're ready to do this, all right? Now, am I correct that Van Austin submitted more projects at Sherman Dickinson? Great job, Lynn. Let me just be very, let's be very frank with you. There are going to be more needs in Grayson County than we can, than we can finance, okay? Everybody needs to understand. So I want, I want you to understand the priorities of what we're looking at for the funding. And I also, I have a commissioner in the back, and we have not discussed this in any detail in the commissioner's court, but it's my, it's my goal to have the commissioner's court participate for the first time ever in the funding of roads throughout Grayson County. Here are the priorities, so you understand me. There is a gap, it's called the gap, in Sherman at 1417 north to Texom Parkway. You know, the area, it is, it is a 1955 engineered highway. What's the speed limit there's supposed to be?
It's designed for 45 miles an hour.
I can promise you, like you've ever been to that when I go to there, so I bet you didn't say it, right? So here's why that's important. It's the only area of 75 north, north of Dallas that's not interstate compatible, that's not interstate standard parking. So as the county judge, I was asked, why, how's this compared to Amazon? We're not even in the conversation. Why? We have no interstate in Grayson County. So this is a big deal. So text dot wants to fund that, that project. So move, move north, A275, the most congested area, not only Grayson County, but in the Paris District. So, you know, and so, and so, look, we all drive 75, right? Let's be honest, how many of us have a difficult time getting from Texom Parkway to 1417? You know, it's a little narrow, if there's ice on the road, you have to park, but otherwise, gee whiz, there's nothing wrong, right? So our goal is to take text dot dollars that they have leveraged from the gap, help take care of the A275 interstate. It's going to be very simple. We're going to add, and the engineer can talk this to death all he wants, and I'm giving the Reader's Digest version. We're going to add a lane on either side of the bridge, so now you can have two lanes turning left instead of one. It's going to, it's going to be an improvement. It's not going to be an end-all, but it'll fix it for 20 years. Moving up to 691 and 503, that is an intersection in Denison where they come together, it's poorly engineered. Clay, and I want to give credit, he's a great dude, has found about a $7 million solution to that project. So this is going to be 75. Now, is Van Austin anywhere in these three parts I just discussed? No, they're not, right? And I've got it. You know, you've got a mayor, a city council to take care of your city. We're going to do some work in Van Austin and the surrounding areas. The plan is very simply this, we're going to list the projects, we're going to use this, 75 is the spine of Grayson County. All of this fusion going north to south, it is, it is the highway that decides what we think text dot wants to fix, okay? So they, we've got 90 million, how much do you think text dot funds for that project?
We've got 80 million.
80 million from text dot, you got to come up with how much?
About 14 million.
14 million. Sherman's putting, does that include Sherman's total?
That, that is, that's pretty.
Oh, okay. We're going to put that money to get this done. Well, but our goal as the county commissioners, and I'm going to speak for the commissioner on a third of a view, is to do this project, but also find projects that impact you here in Van Austin, okay? So we've got Lynn's listed projects, we're going to cost them out, we're going to come back as a commissioner's court and an NPO board and put a plan together. So my message to you tonight is this, we have a two-year opportunity to get something done. If we don't do it, if we don't get it done quickly, in my humble opinion, we're going to miss an opportunity. Because once those big boys start taking the Austin out of the room, guys, we're fine, right? So the punchline, the affirmation point, the end note is this, get your projects in there. No, you know, you're not going to get anything you want. We're going to try to provide money and funding for those most critical projects so that you can benefit. Because I want to be totally transparent with you guys, and I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about the challenges facing us. Our county will grow, but my commitment is this, we're going to put a plan in place that sets Grayson County up for the future so that our children and grandchildren don't look back and say, gee, why didn't they do this job? That's why we're in for office, that is a big, a big part of what I believe in, and that's our commitment. We are committed to making this happen. We're committed to using, using funds from the NPO and the county to make this happen. We understand that funds are limited in some of our smaller town, in fact, it's limited in just every city in Grayson County, right? So it's a, it's a new, new way of thinking. I just want to tell you on this, what our plans are. Thank you for your time. How did it do?
I didn't ask.
The mayor and I have worked together for many, many years. She's a, she's been a great, Mayor coats him wherever it's you, yeah. Yeah, but listen, if you tell him to come see her up in the office, I need that little plug. Thank you guys for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Very quickly, we will thank you forever. Is there anyone on the council who has a question? Suzanne?
Are we going to go over this detailed map or when later, or when are we talking about Van Austin?
I was, I was going to do that after they left, or?
No, no, no.
Why don't, why don't we do that after they leave? Since they are all in kind of swan. Robert, do you have any questions? Do you have any questions back? Okay. We will take a few direct questions from the audience very quickly, if you don't mind. Okay. Is there any that they need to answer? We are going to discuss this with Lynn at Manas afterwards. No questions at this time? We want to thank you all for being here and for your presentation and helping us to understand you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn? This is Lynn at Manas, he is our city engineer.
As Clay mentioned, we attended the TAC meetings, and from the gateway meeting where we talked about the implications of the thoroughfares as they were currently, which is 121 coming through downtown and 5 coming through downtown, we took those comments back to the TAC and talked about, because they also showed that, it was the original map, I kind of put that out there. I...
Which one?
Which one? This was, this was the original map as they submitted it after we heard the demographics and they came back with the thoroughfare plan. You can see that the major southeast-west tollway, or, keep tolling, east-west thoroughfare going through downtown is lined up with FM 31, 33 as it sits now, connects the Village Parkway, goes across, and then connects with Cartwright Road. And then the east-west, the one next one north of that is FM 121, which goes through downtown in its current configuration. So after the gateway meeting and getting, and that means that's a major thoroughfare coming through, that's a six-lane divided coming through downtown, in, in the current alignments, which we talked about, how do, how do you get a six-lane divided thoroughfare down? how do you, how do you get a six-lane divided thoroughfare down A-85 right away on Highway 5 and on FM 121? It's not possible, so, that, you know. Taking the input we had from the council that night, we said, okay, let's see if we can divert the six-lane major thoroughfares around downtown, and then downgrade through downtown, so that we could, at least we could fit the roadway to do that. So, if you go to the next picture, which is the February, uh, okay, this is the detail of that same map. You can see the, is that, uh, my color blind, is that orange?
Orange.
Yeah, orange, and what, how about, uh, what, FM 3133? Okay. The orange on the school and east-west are those two thoroughfares going through downtown in their configurations, and south of town and through the Georgetown area, through there. Couple, a couple things about the FM 3133, problem is, is it shows that connection to Village Parkway going to 75, and then going over to Cartwright. Because of the county line road and the current overpass, we don't meet the spacing criteria, so if we did approve that alignment, it would be like Park Lane and Plano, where you cannot allow access directly to 75 on that alignment, you'd have to go through a connector road and go around. So, our comments at that meeting were, let's move the major east-west on the south side to county line road, realign 3133 in some configuration, and take FM 121. Because we do have a proposed, uh, overpass, or at Spence Road, move that at Spence Road, then we connect on the east side down, uh, Forest. Yeah, yeah. So, let's go to March.
Not much of the 485.
No, yeah, the March picture is on here right now, and what it did was it took in county line road, the major six, uh, six-lane thoroughfare, he's on the south side of Grayson County, rolls it down, and moved the connection of FM 121 up to Spence Road. And there are maps around that you can see this, sorry for this, but, uh, that go up to Spence Road and then come back down and get into the alignment with FM 121 either side of town, basically, from about Eagles Point or Hackberry on the west, and then out past Lincoln Park on the east. So, and then, the north-south corridors, we've taken Highway 5, Waco Street, we also moved it to the Lincoln Park alignment, uh, east of town, tied it in with the industrial park drive, and tried to do it that way. So, we've tried to accommodate the direction we were given at the Gateway meeting to make that happen. And that, and we presented those comments to Clay and his consultants, and that's the changes that we have right now on the thoroughfare.
I must have been gonna talk about Ballard Road, you know, I, I'm sorry. I hacked up to him. Okay, the Ballard, Ballard Road piece, because it is coming all the way into downtown, so to me, I kinda feel like all we did was push off of 121 through downtown, down Ballard Road, which is a road not too long ago, so I'm kinda like, why did you do that Ballard Road piece?
Well, that, that, because it intersects with that north-south that runs up to Lincoln Park, between Industrial Park and Lincoln Park, so that takes all the truck traffic around downtown, takes it out of downtown, totally.
Which would be fine, I'm questioning the part from Lincoln Park to Highway 5. To me, you're gonna still dissect, you're right through residential neighborhood, so that one, I, I didn't like that Lincoln Park thing going through downtown, and honestly, I see what you're trying to do, which is get that, is to come off of 75, take county line road, right? And then, you're looking for blue feeders.
Yeah, blue feeders are the minor collectors which feed, which, 121 and the current 5.
You have county line, instead of 3133 being a major east-west, which are passing Highway 5.
Correct.
Okay, and then, but, you've got that whole blue Ballard Road thing there. And I'm, okay, if you wanted to use the Lincoln Park, then I can see why you're trying to run that then down to pick up something, to get around town, but I, I didn't like that thing where it ran right through town again, because I think it's the same problem we have right now, so now you're gonna dissect a residential area that I'm like, I think we're making a mess of that one, too. So, I, I think I hear what you're saying, which is, how do we get the truck traffic from 75 up to the industrial area, and then keep going east?
North, and then they can, and they catch the 121, they have their Lincoln Park, and then east that they lead to, or go north around that.
Okay, but you are making, uh, county road going east, the major one, and not 3133?
Right, and then the current plan has 3133 downgraded all the way to a four-lane divided, which, and might mean, it, uh, we haven't talked about it, but might come, go off system, take it out of the Techstock and make, remove that Techstock designation. To get funding, we're gonna have to make the Techstock designation and, and the county line road.
But changing a much smaller county line road going east and making it a lot more substantial, we've got right now. Okay, that was that big one, is why you were doing that, and there's just, I, I think that was my biggest concern. There's some little ones where you've got blue, and I'm like, why? But I just.
And I, I got the phone call from Clay saying, you can, okay, well, divert everybody around town, and it's a good time spot. And, 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 uh, you got, you got everybody going around town now, but I still need to get from downtown. At least blue, blue is four-lane divided, which is an 80-foot right-of-way, which is what we have, so whatever that, whatever the future FM 121, Van Austin Parkway, I believe we call Van Austin Parkway, but we call Van Austin Parkway and Waco Street, we can fit within the existing right-of-way and build whatever configuration.
I'm fine with what you do to get around town, as long as you take out that Ballard Road piece that comes from Lincoln Park in. I think my other big questions were actually some ones that were out there, I'm like, I, I still don't understand the whole Ballard Road thing going all the way out to Emory Lane. I'm like, why, why couldn't you come down Lincoln and just pick up county line road and go? Why does the whole Ballard Road for the town road have to exist?
Well, uh, the typical, and this, I'm not a transportation planner, but they're typical, have the major grids every one mile apart, and then have the minor grids every half mile to feed internal and external services.
So, it's just sort of the, this is how we set it out, kind of, but, okay. And then, that was the same thing with West Farmington Road. It's, it kind of just goes between two orange, north-south roads, I'm like.
And, and that's, that's, you, you're trying to put the major traffic, think, think of, uh, West Plano, when you got, uh, you got Springfield, you got Legacy, you got Springfield, you got Parker, and you got Park. All six-lane divided east-west, and you get every mile, you got Alma, New Custer, and Troy.
Okay. So, you're just trying to space them out?
Yeah, and typically, it's a one-mile spacing on the bays, and you dissect the bays with the four lanes every time.
Okay, no, as long as, I, I feel very strongly about that Ballard Road going from Lincoln Park in downtown, as long as that was taken out, and you've got that weird intersection now down at Lincoln Park, where it's very close to Highway 5, makes that little point, I'm like, why even bother? Why not just make, uh, when you come down Lincoln Park, why not just join into that 3133 to the park and just go down Highway 5 versus continuing and having those two roads go like that?
And my only question is, is that standard planning practice, implications on practices, which you place those materials on one mile centers, maximum one and a half miles. Um, if you don't, what you're, what you're gonna end up with is a lot of folks downing on the desert streets, and highways, street, and, and then, if that's still something you want to do.
Can you tell me this with regard to that part? Because the last part I just mentioned, 75.
No, I'm just telling you, in general.
Okay, in general, I, I totally understood the space.
And Susan, we have, but actually, the big piece, in my place of these are lines on paper that count price plan, and as this new development comes in, and we wanna do that, you know, man, when X-Way comes in, and they see.
No, I'm excited more to this, because then we can start to actually do all of our comprehensive planning. We have sort of a basis that is now, you know, tied into the county and the state, and so.
And, and what the county's gonna pass out of us, as these properties develop, we respect the court. We don't have to, but where it is in relationship to 5, and, you know, it should be, like I said, it should be a mile part of the bays and a half mile on the hoods, and so, we're gonna try to, uh.
I feel like this is my only chance to dig into these little things.
Oh, no.
Out with this one, it's too doggone true. You had down here, you've got these two little things coming in to put that in, and I'm like, one and a half mile doesn't fly in this case.
Right, well, yeah, well, and that, yeah, that's, but Highway 5 will be downgraded to a.
That even bigger time, and why are we doing a little bit of that?
Well, that's because we have to figure that out, you get over the railroad, and you get Highway 5 on the newer line east of the railroad.
So, maybe this is a question of, I feel like right now, if I don't speak up, I'm doomed, so.
Got to comment on that. So, what I'm trying to look at is, I'm looking at it from the northbound side, where you have a higher flow of traffic getting that point, so I think when you have, you know, our low flow of blue going through downtown, and you have our higher flow going to straight north, it's time to divert that through traffic around the downtown area. So, it's more of the northbound issue, it's not the south. It's divert that, that, you know, the Collin County has their own thoroughfare plan, where they have a higher flow of traffic coming up toward county road, is that, just to divert that traffic?
That's one of the, yeah, and that, that angle, and how that intersection works, is gonna take a lot of planning. It, it, we, I mean, that, that.
So, I, I'm not doomed by asking, these things get fixed instantaneously, okay?
Somewhere at that corner, we've got, we've got well number six there, too, so, you know, the city's got to. So, we've, we've got all kinds of.
We've still got a lot of work.
We've got a lot of work to do, but our whole idea is we would maintain that corridor, so that we actually.
So, how detailed the response are these ones from us before you go back to the next discussion? Because there's somewhere, I've given you my big one, where I don't, I want it removed, and everyone wants to see it again, and the rest of them, they're just little things that it is, at what point do you finally return, you know, tune later on? Or is it that it has to be handled now?
I don't think you, there's never a final plan. We get something, and then finish the college, um, the, the flow of residents from the east side, I, I'm worried, demographic, we all sit real down and say, okay, where are the real things, we're gonna do this. Um, and, except for the new corridors head to the, to, uh, ready, uh, most of the, most of the new roads are going to be in the central part or the western part. You've got huge watershed out there, and, and, so, there's not a lot flowing in there. But we have to plan for it. But someday, there may be, now, what do you say, get ends at Main Street, or Front Street, or whatever? Where do we say, go through the head cut-off? Where do they cut off on the new road? And say, it's just a small road, it wants to come in from that point. That's something that we can deal with, but where, you know, they get to that point, maybe a much smaller road is good time to get them on the market.
I, I'm just very afraid, on, on that little team that goes to downtown, I'm like, oh, really?
That, you know, nobody wants to buy an house, um, so if there's not a one-way.
Because I very much like the solution that they're going downtown, and I think this is really good, with just that one road, and otherwise, that's great, and I, I understand more about how we have a little bit more time.
Yeah, yeah, we have time, the whole idea is to leave that corridor, that corridor.
Yeah, absolutely.
I need to have that only corridor on the map, so when Mr. Reddick, you develop some property, I need to use a hundred and twenty-foot corridor for your property, for that roadway. And that's what I agree.
Okay, that's a good point.
And does it have to necessarily match this map?
No.
We, we need where a through here, we can put that corridor, we just need to save that corridor.
Yeah, and I think there's been a lot of history that, you know, we, we did our first, this is our last house from 2003. Yeah, so it's been around a long time, and it's also the fact that we're not educated enough to know how, we kinda feel like the state has to bully us into doing things, so I think we've probably felt a little bit more empowered this time around, and say, this really is more of our vision on it, and maybe that keeps the state fed, and we're not forced into a six-lane extension from Anna coming up through the county. So, I think there's some concern in making sure that we're comfortable with what we are empowered right now to say, against this thing.
And that was the, I got from the council, at least, at that time, and, and this, we did the, the Marcher basis plan, expects those comments, so, I mean, I, I mean, supportive of what Clay's done, if you're, if you enter what we thought we were about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Robert, you have any question? Brad? I didn't have one question, there was, I, I'm, how, they do those two developments that are gonna do that Ballard Road, are those next, um?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I mean, and, and whether or not a development comes in off of Ballard Road, and it's out there, when they come in, and all I'm looking for is, I've got a reserve of 84-foot right-of-way. In this general alignment, it, it just gives me a bargaining chip that the city council has given me, to say, as development happens, this is how we, you know, we can go back to the council and ask for, you know, for, for relief from that requirement, you know, the county's gonna be expected to report it after the council adopts it and asks for it.
Which is somehow in the future.
June. Clay, Clay wants, Clay wants adoption by June.
Congratulations. Uh, council has another question at this time. We were having some very brief questions from the audience, we've been glad that it existed, but, but no, we haven't won.
Just to keep it real brief, Clay has done a lot of work on this. Uh, from the north side, Spence Road will become a six-lane, and it seems like that cuts this out to the high school, and perhaps you consider going north to ride instead of that.
I mean, that, that was a consideration, but, again, the, the planing spacing is one, one mile, one mile north of 121 is Spence Road, so, we, we're part of the planning for I-5.
And have to take into consideration where you can get crossing across to 75. And they're not gonna let you put those on the, on the, anything less, or, or more than one mile.
What do you see in the, in the event, or, or, kind of, content that you want to have, which you need to see to this, to part of this?
Well, uh, the county wants to adopt it, and do it with compliance, or, or, in front of the cities prior to that, so that they go in and adopt it, but that, that just becomes a tool for me, when the doctor comes in. Being the city, we're here, we're, we just wait for developers to come in, when they come in, and they want to develop property, and they see, I see a line on the map, I say, you know, that gives me the bargaining chip to say, without council approval, or, or, redundant, I, I'd do this right away, so, there is, there is no, and we'll get into the fun, you know, the funding part, it'll go through the NPO and all of those stuff, it'll go through, but as, as you just mentioned, the near term, the near term, that's five years, is all of 75 to get into the business of standards, and then, then it'll be back to Van Austin and then the rest.
Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you, Susan. Thank you. And we are back to the regular agenda. We will start with the consent agenda, is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda being there?
Yes, can we please move item number seven to the regular agenda?
Okay. Robert, do you have any objections? Brad?
No, that's all right.
She got yours, okay. At this time, we have a. At this time, we have a consent agenda. Uh, the items listed on the consent agenda allow the council to approve all items together without discussion. Our individual motions, items may be removed from the consent agenda, and one has, and it will be number seven, which we will address afterward. At this time, we will address number six, considering taking any action necessary regarding approval of minutes for the February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, February the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and March first, two thousand and eighteen spatial call meeting, and February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting. Also, item number eight, considering taking any action necessary regarding authorizing the May of fourteen to sign an agreement, the home hospital present paid for the provision of non-emergency ambulance transfer service ensuring the city receives payment for all services. Number nine, considering taking any action necessary regarding a warning package for the East Jefferson Waterline relocation of an existing seven hundred and sixty foot linear, linear foot of water line out of the tech stop right away, meeting tech stop requirements in the amount of eighty-four thousand one hundred and ten dollars to J R B pipeline services. This was a necessity and a requirement from tech stop. Is there a motion at this time?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Last second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from council? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passed unanimously. Uh, we are now out of that and at the regular agenda, and this will be number seven, considering taking any action necessary regarding a final plan for Georgetown Village addition, paid phase four, being a sixteen point ten acre tract out of the William Cracker survey abstract number two oh one in the city of Austin, Grayson County, Texas. This property is generally located east of Kelly Lane, west of South Waco Street, and south of Newport Drive. Are there any questions reverting this from council? We will start at the end. Suzanne, do you have any questions?
I was thinking first right now.
Well, I'll move that later.
Uh, I think this is for Lynn. On there, um, what, how is the green space allotted on that? Doesn't it, don't we require for each development that there's a certain percentage of the green space?
Yeah, well, this is part of the Georgetown PD, and they, so they get the benefit of the amenity area and the, and the trail area that they did in previous phases. So they've met those requirements, so.
So now that it's getting bigger, is that green space still needing?
Yes, the green, the green space complies with the PD order.
Okay, and the other thing is that, that we're not requiring them to concrete the pedestrian path, yet the other developments, I know I was driving around, have their concrete paths. Do you know any history behind why we are not making them meet the rest of the neighborhoods with having that concrete path?
Uh, they, well, the previous phase, they did put the concrete path in.
I know, but this one, from what I read from P and Z, is they were not requiring.
Well, no, well, okay, because of the drainage from the elementary school, we, that they created a separate homeowners lot, the homeowners association lot, it's thirty feet wide to handle the drainage runoff from the school all the way down past the bridge to Forest More Park. And the discussion at the P and Z was, the P and Z asked, well, we would like you to put a trail or some kind of access to get to that pedestrian bridge and do that. Well, this, this H O A lot was something they created to prevent violating the city's policy on cross lot drainage. So I don't have the wherewithal to put another trail out there to do that, but the P and Z asked that they consider doing something. And if they do, I'd, I'd say concrete it first, or if they want to come in with an alternate surface, then it's up to them.
The plant does provide for a, for, for instance, a, a.
Since the plant has it on there, they just didn't dictate the.
They just didn't say that it would be a concrete trail.
Yeah, which is my big concern with this, because it's not consistent with the rest of that area's paths, they're all concrete.
Okay, uh, well, uh, I think this is, uh, we're just here, so if you talk with him and ask him that question.
Thanks, thank you.
My name's Ryan Hayes, Stone Hall of Homes. Uh, the, the path, discussion we had at P and Z, part of like what Lynn was talking about, that large lot that was created with the H O A maintenance to accept all of that water off of the school, uh, it was designed as a, for the drainage, it was not designed as a, a green space for a homeowner usage or walk, that was not what it was designed for. Uh, we also took Big Corner off one of the lots to basically allow, since there was a bridge sitting on our property, that is the city put there years ago, uh, basically to allow that to stay. We took that off of the individual lots, made it into the H O A lot. Uh, but I guess the P and Z's opinion that that needed to become a walk path, uh, that's not what it was designed for. Uh, so we allowed the, the bridge to stay where it was. We designed around taking the water from the school and kind of desire, I'd be should be saying, the P and Z's working the bustle of this, since we were doing all of these favors for the city, that's, they would at least allow us to put in what type of walk path we thought would be at least cost effective.
The drainage was required, right?
Not taken in from the school design. The school design should handle their own water.
I could, I don't understand this thing about.
Basically, when, when a school was developed, they did not handle their own water, they just left it running off onto someone else's property.
Uh-huh. So you wouldn't have been able to build anywhere unless you dealt with the water?
Normally, you have to do retention, or you have to send water off in a direction.
Right, but you got stuck upon that property, you didn't deal with that water flow.
Right, but what I'm saying is in the engineering on the school, that should have been addressed that way.
And I?
Right.
I agree with you, but you bought the land, it's got a drainage problem.
Understand that we are doing things in addition to, but we don't necessarily think to, I guess is the consideration that I'm looking at there.
Okay, I'm trying to understand, how you, to me, when you buy it, the land, you have drainage problems, I mean, you got that, whether this school should have been, so I'm trying to separate between a drainage problem we're talking about this pathway. I mean, we're talking.
Well, it's, it's a private lot.
Right, it's going to belong to H O A. And I don't understand about the bridge. Is this the bridge that goes over the forest more, over the tree? Okay, but it's on your property. So you could have removed that. You're wrong with any of that.
But that's, we're not interested in, that's, that's part of the city, that's part of, I mean, we're totally.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, we, we want to work around that and make sure, I mean, that's a, a focal point of the city, that's a big deal. We're not interested in, you know, picking up private, and that just makes sense.
So my, my last question kind of falls along that, that same topic with the bridge. We got sidewalks in front of the homes. Uh, when I look at this flat, there are sort of still more lots to be developed heading east, is that correct? Or is this the end of Thompson?
That is the end.
Okay, so is there?
You might have to come over there and look at that a little bit, so you can make sure, make sure you can look at the center.
Yeah, so this, this, this is moving.
No, no, there's a couple, there's, there's two pages. There, there's a couple more lots, straight from first.
Can I do that one? So, there we go.
So the bridge is front of you.
Yeah, so I guess another question I had, what, access anywhere to that bridge, or is it just around?
Right now, it's from the school. Um, that was the walk path that they were talking about. They, they wanted to add one coming down this way, down the ground.
Suzanne, do you have any more questions? Robert?
Uh, I was at the P and Z meeting, some of the alternatives that y'all were talking about, and, uh, suppose concrete is like frustrating, y'all are like, you look nice.
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much for your input. Suzanne, you have another question, just at this time. We have a motion to approve the handoff there from Robert Gensler, is there a second? Also, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All of them so thankful, please raise your hand. Apponees? For standing.
Now I just want to.
Okay, thank you very much. We will. Now, uh, continuing, we'll go to item ten, considering taking any action necessary regarding a resolution approving and adopting an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process as requested by Atmos Energy Corporation with its petition. Uh, we have a representative here. Uh, does anyone in council have questions they would like to make regarding this and Brad? I will start to see.
Do you have some more to answer?
Yes, would you please come forward, tell us your name.
Yes.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Terry Tondo, advocate of Atmos Energy, requesting the approval of a R R M tonight, which is a rate review mechanism. This is not a rate increase, it has nothing to do with our rates, except for the process of what we go through as far as determining the rates. You have been under this process for the past five years, uh, months way through the course of the city. I'll make sure the question is right there.
Brian?
Thank you for the clarification.
Robert, do you have any question? Suzanne, do you have any question?
Oh, I have questions. Okay, because I, I'm.
I thought she read.
Yeah. I know you say we've been under this mechanism for five years, what is the difference? Because the way I'm reading it, we're approving and adopting an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for interim rate adjustment process. And I feel like, and then I'm looking at this R M sheet, and I'm trying to read the difference between new tariff, previous tariff, and I'm like, why would I want to do any of this? So maybe that I'm not understanding the, this way, a review mechanism and adjustment.
Okay, uh, let me go into a little bit more detail, if it's all right.
Please.
Uh, there are two entities that are involved right here, a coalition of cities and a non-coalition of cities. Uh, within our area, we have about two hundred cities that are in a coalition of cities. The smaller communities have chosen to not join the coalition, so therefore they're called non-coalition of cities. The cities that are coalition have hired attorneys to come in and work with Atmos Energy as far as a rate settlement. So they come in, they work with us, they open our records up, they negotiate the rate, and then the non-coalition of cities, the smaller communities, uh, get the same benefit as what the other communities get as far as wanting to settle rates.
That, that is the non-coalition cities.
That is correct. And the coalition of cities get the same rate.
Okay.
The, uh, non-coalition, the smaller communities get the benefit without having to pay the attorneys.
Okay, and that's with using this review mechanism?
That is correct. The alternative, you may want to know that right there. What that does right there, it is a GRIP filing, a gas reliability infrastructure program, which takes away anything from the city's as far as decision-making, and takes it to the Reverend mentioned down in Austin. And that's who does, they get negotiated. Let me assure you, you come out of lockdown, having done the city's negotiated rather than the Reverend.
So is that the annual interim rate, interim rate adjustment process, is the GRIP process?
No, that is the R R M. The GRIP process, uh, takes it completely out of the city's hands and takes it to the Reverend mentioned in Austin.
Okay, and I guess I'm still looking at the thing that we are wanting to approve and adopt tonight as a annual rate review mechanism, the R R M, as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process.
So the word process in there is the rate process of what that, uh, we go through as far as the R R M and negotiating with the coalition cities. It is a process in the R R M tonight.
Okay, because you described as non-coalition group, we get the benefit of, with a coalition of cities, we spend money with attorneys, do all this stuff, but that's the annual rate review mechanism, right?
Right, uh-huh.
Okay.
But there's a process involved with it, and that's the negotiation and the settlement that, that takes place with the coalition cities.
Okay, but you want us to approve the review mechanism, not the adjustment process? Don't understand one over the other.
Uh-huh. It is, are you reading the portion on the resolution?
I am reading what I have here on my agenda, as well, I am requested to approve tonight. That's what I'm reading.
And it says, resolution approving and adopting an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process. That is the word that we have in the paper.
So that's what you're asking me to do, and I think I understood what you're saying about an annual rate review mechanism, but I, but it's substituting something, I don't understand what the substituting thing is, this interim rate adjustment.
The two things, the two things that have changed in the, the process, uh, over the five years that you've had, the two items that are being changed is, in the negotiating process, it started in April, and it was given three months to negotiate and to settle with the cities. That has been changed to five months, so it goes from April to October, giving the cities and the coalition that two extra months in order to negotiate the process.
That's the only difference between the review mechanism and the adjustment process?
That's the one I remember right now. There is one other, oh, uh, it has to do with our R O E, yeah, what that does is change the R O E from ten point five percent that we are allowed to get to a nine point eight, which reduces the rate of, of return that we can get on our, that is, the maximum amount would be nine point eight percent.
So R O E is return on equity?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this little key changes thing between new tariff and previous tariff, you are now saying your return on equity, you're going to drop it from ten point five down to nine point eight?
That is correct.
And your capital structure, so those two columns are the differences of what we're approving?
Yes.
So filing discount, there's now no filing discount, but I do see on here base rate, base charge increase, and I think that's the one that shows how I built.
Uh-huh.
So it was capped at fifty cents. Now we've got two paths, sixty cents and seventy.
Sixty cents, yes.
So does that hit my pocketbook that we're approving twenty, twenty percent, twenty cents more than what I'm doing right now?
When the, within the process, yes, it is.
Okay, because I'm thinking, I am, I'm breaking it down to a simple thing, that I'm not going to pay twenty cents more by twenty five.
Uh, actually, the process that you're approving tonight, it actually drops to rate a dollar and a quarter in residential billing and about four dollars on a commercial bill. And that is not due to the operation of our company, that has to do with the reduction of. That has to do with the reduction of our tax rate, which we can, uh, for that and the new tax rates.
Yeah, so that was the discussion about the reduce of taxes $2 more than you're passing out to your customers.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm hard pressed to want to approve something when I kind of look at the aging infrastructure we have here in Van Alstine, and I'm like, I don't want to give you anything when I've got 100-year-old pipes out in my backyard, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this time, I want to ask the council, and I'm correct, this must be passed before it goes through, just let me hear that. At this time, the next thing is to have a motion regarding this item.
I have a motion to deny, because I just can't see any reason as to why we shouldn't pass it.
May I ask an action? If we do not pass this, what we will be forced to do is take it to the Reverend Commission and file a GRIP against the city, asking for a rate increase by the city, by the Reverend Commission, and that takes right there, the city of Van Alstine will be get with all of the rate costs, including the fees for the attorneys and any fees that may be associated with it.
I wish that showed up on the sheet then, because I'm getting asked to approve something I obviously do not understand.
We were not asking you to approve the GRIP, we're just asking for the RRM, and that's fine.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have a motion not to approve this. Is there a second? Second call, is there a motion, a second for this motion? Third and final call, is there a second for this motion? There not being a second for this motion, this motion has died due to the lack of a second. Are there any other motions regarding this item?
Hold on, the motion that we approved?
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion in the second, just in the public discussion. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion passed. Next item is item 11. Considering taking any action necessary regarding approval of an order, the city of Van Alstine accepts its authorized nature and sale of the city of Van Alstine takes its tax done Series 2019, leading an annual annual tax and providing for the security enforcement of Sydney and enacting other provisions, are any discussion regarding this?
We need to authorize the mayor's protest.
That is a question for our attorney. Do you need to authorize the mayor's protest to sign this on?
Yes, is that on? All of the documents from the bond attorney, which I have here for signature, are set up for the mayor's protest signature.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion at this time, or I will never allow them?
I have a motion to approve item 11, adding that we authorize the mayor's protest.
Is there a second? Is there any public discussion from council? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Let's stand. Thank you, motion passed. Number 12, we, this is considering taking any action necessary regarding approval of a request by Parks and Recreation Board to seek funding for the community, from the community development corporation for adult parks, Forestmore Park, and we do have a public comment on it. Mr. Jim Atkinson, will you please come forward?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to express my thoughts on this topic, like we believe about what is an excellent initiative, but we need to think in regards, not so much to others as against people. It gives people a chance to get out of their community and socialize, people do not otherwise socialize, it's good for kids, it's good for children, it gives you other avenues you have for socialization, I think, for people. A chance to meet the neighbors, if they would not otherwise do, and for relative and smaller men, I don't think it's significant, it's a weakness. And if you get people that opportunity to register second in our population, you know everyone is clear, if you do this, you do.
Thank you very much for that support. As chairman of the Parks Board, I will speak in regard to this. It came to our attention that there was really a great need for a dog park. We had a problem at the Forestmore Park. People, as you know, at baseball fields, have been getting kids around them. People were taking their dogs and trying to get loose, and they were feared, and the things that the FASSA and the others have done to bring up baseball parks that today were being destroyed, we locked it, and they cut the lock. So we have decided that what there really is a need for a dog park in Van Alstine, people do not want to go to a park and kill their employee and find out that the dog has left their, um, a minute there. So we will have a dog park, the location of this dog park is at the Forestmore Park, and it is, what we are doing is we have an old volleyball field there, and it has not been used for two or three years, so we've decided that it is more important that we do a dog park and utilize an unused park. So at this time, is, are there any questions from the council?
I'd just like to make a comment, coming from using that particular piece of space. I thought that was a great point about the Parks Board, typically when you see those volleyball parks or volleyball courts that may have the same, none of the municipalities, they're more like weed gardens, so this has been a great use of that space. And it also highlights the importance of having pedestrian access to the bridge, the, from the new development down to the park, so it's accessible by pedestrians and pedestrians.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I just have a question. Do you have any kind of schedule for any of that, if somebody has a question?
They, I hate to put that on the stage, because you guys voted already.
We do have a Parks Maintenance Person that has the part of the job. We will have a waste disposal station, people have plenty of bathroom, we also, we can have an ordinance to enforce it. So we will have a person that attend that station.
And the agenda for the Parks Board this week is to review the ordinance the city has regarding animal control. Suzanne, do you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to just comment that what is concerning me is that we are sending things over to the CDC, and I think this might be more of a process thing, and I think we need to clarify that when we send these, if we approve them, or we send them over, I mean, there are limited times to the CDC, but I think the process is that the Parks Board can't go directly to CDC, it's got to come through us to say, send it to CDC. But I fully expect CDC to prioritize their schedules. It doesn't necessarily mean that they will choose to do these and that they will need to prioritize what they can and cannot do, because I think their budget's being pretty full of items also. So I just wanted to be clear on the process on some of those.
Well, it is, you got your best thing. This is approval of a request to seek funding. If you're only approving the fact that the Parks Board can go to the CDC, not that the CDC has to approve.
Correct. And I just wanted to reiterate that, because we've had comments from CDC before that we tell them what to do, and we want to make sure we're not telling them we're sending something saying, please consider, talk about it, and figure it out.
Thank you. Is there a motion for number 12 at this time?
I will make a motion to approve and give the Parks Board consent to seek funding from the CDC for a dog park.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion in the second. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose?
Stand.
And stand. Okay. Number 13 is considering taking any action necessary regarding approval of a request by the Parks and Recreation Board to seek funding from the community center, community development corporation for beaches and lighting at the Jordan Field Park. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Brad?
I've got one question. With the type of LD li that we're looking at, people have different types of LD li's, different temperatures, I guess, so to speak, it's like cool or something blue. Well, what are we all looking at as far as LD li's go?
The light fixture itself is one that was shown directly to day on.
Yes, it will be a daylight, that's a little, gives you more light than a cool light, which is a softer light. But the daylight, it's going to be less light, so we're going to find just less light in the park. And the type of lights we're looking at are going to be downcast and not, uh, skyblazing. Thank you.
Robert, do you have any question? Suzanne?
I'm saying one time this on, how come you picked daylight?
Because it's, it has more luminous.
Okay, it does.
Yes. Cool whitehead is a softer light, and usually what you'll see cool white in most offices where the glare is, it might affect a few times.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it's going to be visually maybe really bright, but I could see that it'd be need more light, and that's really our option.
There are only 51 bulbs, where we put in there, it's in there now, there's 100, so I mean, it equals about 13 watt, I think that's in total. It's less, it's less light, but it's brighter light.
Today, any questions? At this time, is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that second? We have a motion, a second. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The review committees. Number 14, considering taking any action necessary regarding approval of an unbudgeted emergency expense to repair well number four in the amount of $98,128.66. Are there any questions from the council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Sorry? Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Any comments? The next thing that we have on our agenda is coming, I'm at the end, we're so glad to have one going to your tonight. This is our interim city manager's report. My... Well, our microphones are a little complicated.
First, I'd like to thank, is that where this is?
We're going to get close.
You have to get real comfortable with this thing?
Yes.
I apologize, I'll get used to this. I'd first like to thank the council for the opportunity. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'd like to thank my wife, who's sitting through all of this for the first time. Despite my telling her to eat cookies and drink coffee and leave, she stated, and I appreciate that. I enjoy serving the council and citizens of Van Alstine, it's an honor, and I've really enjoyed my first week on the job, and I'm grateful you're giving me a second week on the job. My first week on the job has been very busy, meeting with many good, hardworking employees in the city, as well as community leaders, contractors, and a good number of citizens. All have been welcoming, and for that I am very appreciative. I met with all department heads in their place of business, this included meetings with the police chief, the fire chief, public works, our engineering firm, I'm at Madison Johnson, I toured the CDC, EDC offices, I've been to the library, and I've had lunch with the senior citizens, and that was Monday. Conducted my first weekly department head staff meeting on Tuesday morning, and started the process of clearing out 1,204 new emails that were waiting for me. I'm still in process. I participated in an exit interview with our auditors, which was very informative, and I scheduled a drive around with our police chief, City of Van Alstine, through the Iceberg Police Department, but that was Tuesday. On Wednesday, I met with Todd Thompson on Core Energy. He showed up in my office at a very bad time because the power was out at my personal residence the night before, and guess who the provider is? On Core Energy. I met over the phone with a deep pipes developer, he's developing a unit in the downtown area. I called and introduced myself to planning and zoning, and will be attending your board meeting on the 21st of next week in the evening. Thursday, I met with Atmos to go through much of the same that we went through this evening, and try and get clarification as what's being requested and asked for. I thought I had a handle on it, I'm not sure I did. And on Friday, I toured the city with a police chief to see things through his eyes, and that was my first week on the job. This week, I've had the opportunity to tour, because I talked to the director, and see the city through the eyes of looking down, which is that water line, 60-inch water lines featured development, talk the city through his business. I'll be doing the same thing with the fire chief in every department I had, so I could do as much input as possible. I'm not knocking on doors. Today, I've knocked on Texas Car Denture, I met with the president of the bank, who is his position on Van Alstine, and I'm meeting with as many citizens as I've been in business owners, as I'm moving through the process. I'll have lunch with Rodney Williams tomorrow. Thank you for the invite, I appreciate it. So we'll do a little talk about what he's doing. And I'll be meeting with Lynn again, in his office, to understand our engineering master plan. My first meeting with him was, while I was about eight feet underwater, finally figured out what was going on. I think I'm about at surface now, so I can now talk with him and feel a little bit more confident that I can be intelligent and I have a conversation with him. So I enjoyed this time. My door's open to anybody that wants to come in. Probably 24/7, everybody else does, so feel free to do it, and your decision.
Thank you very much. I'd like to look if you want to. We do appreciate you very much, Ken, you're a black woman. Ken, hurry.
I'll do a mini stand. The administrative department for the month of February, we did receive 15 requests for public records. We have continued preparations for the May 5th general and special elections. Just as a reminder, early voting will be held at Grayson College beginning April 23rd through the 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And April 30th through May 1st, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then again on election day, May 5th, still at Grayson College, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We hosted the fall audit at CBA's for over a week in February for the field review portion of the annual audit, and they do anticipate bringing the final audit to council for consideration in May. The Planning and Zoning Commission will meet here Wednesday, March 21st at 6:30. We will have more development conversation and discussion regarding the basing requirements as well as the thoroughfare plan that we went over tonight. City Hall will be closed on Friday, March 30th, in observance of Good Friday. And then also wanted to remind our citizens that thanks to Grayson County Precinct One Commissioner, Jim Whitmire, Jeff Whitmire, because the Grayson County is hosting a spring cleanup, April 7th, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Precinct One Barn on FM 1417 Sherman. For more information on that, you can visit the city's website or contact Precinct One directly. They will be accepting large items such as appliances, furniture, struck metal, and two motor tires. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Barnes?
Mayor Proton and council, we are still looking for an S R O. to get that position filled. Still have two patrol openings. We were able to get one of the positions filled for patrol. That candidate will start March twenty-first. I just want to remind everybody, code grass will start growing now that the sun is coming out. And also, April the twenty-eighth, this is a program that we've done several years, the take back program for prescription medication. So, if you have old medication laying around the house, if you want to get rid of it in a proper way, that's going to be April the twenty-eighth from ten A M. to two P M. Here at the police department.
Someone's going to make anything. Mr. White?
Good afternoon, honorable counsel. Public Works has worked this last two weeks on pothole factions. We're going to use five foot loads of asphalt. Also, Grayson County will be starting Monday on truck riding in the streets. We'll start the two streets on East Side of Stanford. And we start on the larger ones next. Public Works is starting Friday next week, this weekend. So, they'll be getting in contact with Burton and letting them know if they take a place in front of the places of use. The crews had made the war late this last year. It took us a couple of days to repair. We had to have a bio cleaning special work done. So, we shut the water off, make a good payment. We would be taking samples of bacteria on well number four. And once it shows clear, the bacteria will get flushed in the elevator tank and then infect bacteria on the number four beyond last night. We had had one of our largest months and disconnect for this last building, we had six pages. So, we just made sure that we could get their bills by then. It's on the good time and after kind of get the shit for our.
Did you say six pages of disconnects?
Yes, ma'am.
You could follow that one.
Okay, well, hopefully a little bit more sunshine news. Moving on, and council, Door Count for February is a right over fourteen hundred people. She's a little bit down from last month, but comparatively for an average, February's only down point zero five percent. We circulated a little bit over eighteen hundred items and welcomed twenty-nine new visitors to the library. We hosted eight children's programs attended by eighty-four children and fifty-two adults, fourteen council meetings attended by twenty-seven teams. Let's see, I think everybody might have had a chance to participate in Reed Cross America at the elementary school. Myself and Portland's lover named Sarah Barbage went home her own costume. We were able to stay for two hours and do about six, maybe seven classes. We hosted our own event, our own Dr. Seuss Reed Cross America the next Saturday, which was the third, and had about twenty-one kids and fifteen adults come. So, great to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. Really, it's a white nun. There are still side manager staff with Ashley out, spectrum back mid-April, and right now just still in operation.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have anything you would like to report?
This is our senior junior. The development is going strong with the approval of Stonehauer Black tonight. Our final plans are in place, so they should be starting construction within the next thirty days for that sixty-two locks, sixty-two additional locks. So, let's ready cover. Sandberg Park Elementary School has gotten their back fees and their utilities approved, so payday should be starting on that in the next thirty days. Plans were delivered for Graywood Phase Three, which is a hundred and fifty-seven miles on the west side of Graywood today. So, they'll be in a review process. Their plan's already approved, so once I get the plans approved, they'll be ready to get to start construction operating in the next sixty days. Next month, you will see the Thompson Track zoning on your agenda, which is the hundred thirty-sixth east across the college of Blue Dome Road. That's approximately four hundred lots with twenty-four acres of commercial. So, they've got some minor revisions to their current to be, and we plan to come in. Also, I think that mine approved, we plan for due tomorrow at City Hall again for the Graywood Extension and the, I'm actually, blasphemy. Well, because my design staff of three plus me and Bob, it's spent about eight hours already this week in final form, so we, it's a love song, but we don't charge money for that. We still here, don't charge for that. So, but we will have those, that project is out for bids to approve. The authorization advertised last month. We've got the plan ready. We did it in April second, so you will see a bunch of activity in that area. We shared this path, letter of consent is sent to text out, so we expect to get word for it to go from then in the next thirty to forty-five days. So, phase one will be started and, oh, yep, and you're warned again tonight for the water line on East Jefferson one point one. We will get that started. That's got to be finished by May first, so we're going to be, we'll be jumping on that quick. So, that's going to run strong. Lot of activity and looking forward to leaving the lane and getting caught up with all the balls that are in here.
Thank you very much. Chief Downbrook?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a quick rundown on our statistics for February. Nine one one, medical, nine thirty, we're down from the prior line. Transfers running through nine one one. Fire, twenty-three, so a total of call for focus, number one hundred and nothing. This looks like it's down quite a bit, but like I was telling Susan earlier, this number fluctuates and, you know, it's going to fluctuate all the time if it be down. It could be, you know, February only had twenty-eight days compared to January and other months. So, it's normal to see that number down this month, you know? It could jump way up next month or whatnot. We filled our staffing vacancies and my guys are seriously happy about that. Decreased their workload quite a bit, so we've got some green guys, we're training them. You see them around. They're pretty shy, so if they don't say much to you, don't take it the wrong way. They're just really shy. We did receive a grant from the Texas Forest Service, about eight thousand dollars. They'll match any contribution there, so it's one hundred percent free money for training aids, so we're looking at what we need as a department, you know, the teachers who are not. So, we're just going to live it lively and we're very happy about that. We, we're in the, we're in the pot for some other grants as well for the Forest Service. Brush truck, we've been going after for a long time. I've really got high hopes for that one. I feel it might be crushed, but the other one's equipment and bumper view, we got a good shot at it. So, hopefully we'll do those and that's all we have.
Thank you very much. That concludes the department heads. So, next we will have our closing call minutes by our council and I'll start with Chief Brown.
Thank you. So, Mr. Z, not to disrespect Reed Cross America, I as well basically that, you know, that call we gave ladies, I had an opportunity to go read some children. I also want to congratulate Chief Barnes on his years of service and Mr. Jones, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Robert?
Okay, I have a couple of announcements on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. March twenty-second is the meet candidates event. It's going to be at Grayson College, six o'clock.
Doors open at six.
And forums start at six-thirty. We also started, it's a little early, but it's never too early. To remind everybody, kind of Music in the Park, that'll start, that'll be sponsored by the chamber, provided by the chamber. There's different sponsorship levels, but everybody come on out. It's monthly, May eighth, July and August, and it's second, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday each month.
And last year, the whistle stopped graciously, gave us a place, it's been a hang three and a four, we're running out last year, but we didn't have alternative sites for that. So, it's a, it's a good event for going to come and gather and join the Music in the Shore Fellowship. I would also like to take this opportunity, as I do, to thank the small business owners that are here. Y'all would raise your hands. I'm doing this for our new city manager's benefit. Mr. Murphy? And, I know we had more that were here earlier, but the small business owners are vital to our community and I appreciate everyone. I would also like to thank all the volunteers here in my audience that last time when I did that, I left out a couple and I heard about it after the meeting. So, I want to be sure and catch everybody. Also, for our city manager's benefit, so people know the people in this community that support our community. And we have representative from the senior center board, if you raised your hand, can I? We have just about all of the E D C board in the hall today. We have Roger from the C D C. We also have Jim, he represents the school board and the D N Z. Now, we have, yeah, there you are. And also, thank you to the candidates that are going to be running in the election. You know, without volunteers to serve, we wouldn't have the government and that kind of thing. Did I leave anybody?
Thank you.
Okay. Don't think I did. And also, I would like to thank the city staff also. We've got a wonderful team.
Did you get your name called back?
Yeah. Well, yeah, thank you for the, thank you for the concern. And I forgot to mention Mary James is a member also. And with the change.
Susan? I'm just going to follow up with that political, it's really wonderful right now. We're going through our process and we've got lots of citizens that have put their names in hack for rent for city offices. It's very exciting to have lots of choices, but I want to make sure everybody was aware that it is a felony to remove signs from other people's lines and property and not including others as to their opinions. It is America and we're at our best going through this process right now, so I think just to make sure we're very respectful of differing opinions because it's to be celebrated and not disrespecting.
Thank you very much. I do have a question, I need to make sure that I didn't get the last forty, so I wanted to know that tonight we're going to stick to what I told you last month. We will be leaving this council meeting. You can stay in this room and have refreshments and drink coffee and stay up all night, but we will be adjourning with the E D C to go into executive session. And I like, Robert, I just think every nighty for everything. That is a true non-negotiable story. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Right now, we are going to go to executive session in accordance with chapter five-five-one of the Texas government code. Open meetings while the city council may need in a closed executive session pursuant of applicable law. And the item that we are going to be doing is pursuant of the following designated section of the Texas government code under chapter five-five-one. Council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. Section five-five-one, more than seventy, deliberation regarding real property, regarding purchase of property by the economic development corporation. The time that we are adjourning is, my timekeeper Winslow, it's eight thirty-five, we will be going into executive session in itself with Thompson. Thank you.
Section, the time is nine oh three, item number twenty. Considering taking any action necessary as a result of the executive session, however, this item is postponed until a specific, a special call meeting can be scheduled. The next item is number twenty-one. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. We adjourned, what time is it?
Nine oh three.
Nine oh three, still.